The same outfit. I was, I was just sitting here. I was like, thank God I changed. Oh my God.
Welcome to the meeting of the Lenedary School Board to be held on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the library at Lenedary High School, 295 Mammoth Road, Lenedary, New Hampshire. The meeting will also be broadcast on local cable access channel eight as well as the district YouTube channel. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to our left here, please, or behind you folks?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll jump right into our consent agenda with some upcoming meetings. August 20th, 2025, we'll start our building tours at North School, the middle school in Matthew Thornton, starting at 6:00 PM. And then the next evening, August 21st, 2025, the other building tours will start at South School, then go to Moose Hill, and then the high school, starting at 6:00 PM. On September 2nd, 2025, will be a regular school board meeting here in the library at 7:00 PM. And on September 23rd was originally a 9/16th. We changed it to September 23rd, 2025, to a regular school board meeting here in the library at 7:00 PM. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please? Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Thank you. Jump into committee reports. I'll start with Amanda. Anything on your end?
Nope.
Sarah? Tim? You? Kevin?
Uh, nope. Nothing there.
All set. I'll jump into just a couple updates. I was at the town council meeting last night. Just an update. We got an update from DOT on the Stonehenge 28 construction project. It's going to start next spring on mobilization. Most of the heavy construction. Sounds like it's going to happen during the summer, so it will not hamper the buses as much near the end of the year. If all goes well, brunt of the work will be done come early fall. There will still be, you know, one lanes closed and just one lane of traffic, so be prepared. They'll update the schools as well. They did a great presentation last night, and then the finish of the project will happen in early 2027, spring to summer, and finish that project up. But it's quite extensive, where they're shifting lanes for a period of a month, month and a half, while they construct half and then shifting it back. And they said if it gets too late, they're going to stay that way through the winter and finish it in the spring and that, so we can have a good flow of traffic and plowing and that. So they said they would do all they could during the summer months to help with, with school buses and a lot of the major traffic. So update on that. Another thing got brought up is Old Home Day. Was, has been done over the years by volunteers for a long time. This year, the town has had to kind of take it on and last year, and it's really draining their resources. So they had a conversation last night about the council getting some volunteer forms out of, getting volunteers again to kind of run Old Home Day. I think Kathy Wagner did it for like 15 years, her and her team and that. So I think we've got, luckily, we've got the town manager here tonight, but we, their, their resources are thin, just like ours are in areas, and for them to be doing dual roles this time of year is really taxing them. So I think if we can champion with the council to try to get a volunteer group from the schools, all the people we deal with on the school side, as well as regular town people, and promote this, that, you know, we could get it back to that volunteer. So I'll, I'll try to get some more information from the council and work with the school board too, to, and, and superintendent to get some information out to our school community that may not, you know, be involved on the town side as much on a day-to-day. And maybe there's some volunteers on the school side that would love to help with Old Home Day. So just some thoughts after listening to the conversation last night to get it back into the volunteer hands. Another thing I just wanted to hit on, there was a nice article I shared with, with the superintendent yesterday and with, with the board. There was a article in Monday's paper in, in the board and superintendent and staff. I've been talking about this for the last three to six months is, and I thought the topic was, was spot on, is improving student engagement with our staff, with our families, with, you know, community events. And this was a summit they held this week, and I wish I knew about it. I didn't realize it was even going on. But they had a couple of keynote speakers in that. Rebecca Winterup and wrote a couple of novels. And they just hit on some key points that I think we all want to see and working with the superintendent to happen in our Lenedary schools is, is, you know, and a couple, a couple of the notes are the key to building better partnerships between schools and families with the goal of better serving kids. All starts with engagement. So if we can have that positive engagement with our students, with our staff, and bring that back into our buildings and really promote it and getting engaged and, and keeping our parents informed. I, I think you're going to see, not only have we done a good job with grade point averages and increasing, but I think it'll be twofold. I think that's the part that's maybe holding us back a little more is getting these, these students to want to come to school, get mom and dad involved, get to know the teachers, get to know the parents, and let's make that a community environment again inside our buildings. Because I think there's a lot of that disengagement. I'd love to see that come back to Lenedary on that part. So, you know, it, it's a great article. It was in Monday's paper. If you get a chance to read it, people at home and that. And I'm going to look some more into it to these speakers and that, and maybe we can look at them possibly coming into the Lenedary community and, and see if we can put a forum together for this. So a great piece, and I, I was excited about it because we've been talking about it, and, and I really want to see this implemented coming into our buildings and that. So that's all I've got. So we'll move into now announcements and presentations. And up at 5.1, I'd like to introduce our new town manager, Sean Mahollen, please. Come on up, Sean. Take a seat right over there, and welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to come before you folks today. It's great that I've had a chance to meet with you and, and further strengthen the relationship that the school and the town already has. I'm used, I'm accustomed to that, and the communities, the communities I've worked in in the past, it's really critical. And you, you'll notice this across the country, in cases where you have an independent school district and the municipality and the school district work closely together, those communities are thriving and those communities are successful. And that's, it's just as critical here as it is anywhere else, and I want to continue to strengthen that relationship. And as you know, and I think you're going to be talking about a little bit later, is we have a project that's going to allow us to work very closely together. I'm really excited about that. I think there's a lot of opportunity to save the taxpayers' money across the board, which is what our collective mission should always be, other than provide the services that we provide. But trying to do that is a cost, most cost-effective manner that we can do that. So I think we've got a, a good opportunity here. This, this project happened to come before both of us, and we have the ability to use our cash value instead of having the bond that the town has to be able to do, meet the objectives of the school district, which meets the collective objectives of the town, I would suggest, in the school district. So, thank you.
That's great. Welcome to Lenedary, Sean. I know you've been up in Lebanon for quite a while, and, but you were local here before that.
I was, yes, yeah.
Well, welcome home.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate what you're doing already in the town and look forward to the future. So, thank you so much for coming in. Anyone have any questions or?
I look forward to working with you.
Yeah. Appreciate you working with us on that project as well.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Sean. All right. We'll move on to 5.2, 2025 to 2030 enrollment, space and staffing study for our elementary schools. And Dan?
Good point. We do have this presentation in a large stack on that table right there if anyone wants a copy. You know, we got here today, starting three months ago, when someone from the budget committee came up to a school board meeting and said, Dear school board, we hope you bring back last, last year's project. I think it was kind of a moment we were all dreading. I think the March vote was tough. It was a project we worked on for many, many years and got very close to approval, but didn't quite get there. And after that point in time, I think all the elementary schools saw a large uptick and parents kind of asked them about full-day kindergarten and merit edding, and that kind of led to our first roundtable discussion in June. And Sandra Mack and I have been on this journey for many, many years. Probably the first time we, we saw real passion in the room. Not that people weren't passionate before, but it seemed to kind of hit a, a breaking point where people really want us to figure it out. And I think at that time, myself, Jason, and the elementary principals and other administrators kind of asked for a little bit of time to do some studying. So we, we have done our work and we're presenting it to you all. And I think, you know, we thank you for your patience and, you know, I think what we wanted to get done is really give a broad picture of enrollment, what it most likely will look like over the next five years, what that means for space and staffing, which is part of that, and, and kind of loop everything back to kindergarten, which is something we've been talking about for a while now. So Jason's going to drive the shift. This will be odd because I can't see what he's doing. Hopefully, he won't be making fun of me behind my head, but, but we'll try and move on. So if we go to the second slide. Say it again?
Play my microphone.
Pull, pull my mic closer. Thank you. Okay. You know, there, there's the, the main movements of, of this report, and it's 44 pages. Sorry, it's so long. We're going to go through our enrollment journey and kind of really understand why we see this big downward shift. Then what we're going to do is connect it to our space needs. We're going to, we're going to walk through the prior projects we see, we have seen, the community has seen, and, and kind of show how the immediate future will probably be different. You know, one thing I will say upfront is we do believe in a high level of confidence, and this is myself, Jason, and all the elementary school principals and their admin teams, is we have the space right now to start full-day kindergarten next year, by '26, '27, without modulators, or the need for a 60% voter approval for capital needs. So that would be a big change from what we've been doing. And when we go through this, we're, we're going to show you when that statement will work and may, may not work if enrollment suddenly comes back up. And we'll talk, we'll talk about our pay-as-we-go model moving forward. We're going to relate this a lot of staffing at the same time and really, and really kind of tease it out a little bit. And, and just like last year's project, we believe we can save money in this process. And we think it's an overall stronger financial process. There are some investments we need to make. You know, I think our, our building principals did an excellent job. They, they really scoured every single inch of their buildings. There's a small project we would have to do at Matthew Thornton that I think is really beneficial. We, we have to invest in some furniture and some curriculum supplies. We'll go over that. And then there's also a, a slightly larger project we would recommend for Matthew Thornton too, because that, that seems to be the hardest building in terms of space, in terms of enrollment. But also, we have a lot of classrooms from the 1940s that aren't as big as a lot of the other classrooms there. So that's kind of where this is all heading. So we go to the next slide. Where we were in 2022 was many years of predictable enrollment. For the nine years before that, we were pretty much getting 300 kids in every single class. You know, may, maybe not everyone went to half-day kindergarten, but usually by first or second grade, we would see about 300 kids in, in a class, in an ebbed and float every year. And we were, we were very used to it, and it was very stable. And that's, that was the place we began kind of our journey on full-day kindergarten after COVID, when we were through that process and kind of ready to kind of tackle the full-day kindergarten issue. So we go to the next slide. Three summers ago, you know, what we had in our K-15 space was 1,745 kids. If we would have had full-day kindergarten in that year, we would have needed 87 classrooms to pull that off. Now, the, the problem with understanding our schools is that's 87 regular classrooms. There's a lot more that goes on in all of our buildings. You have special education programs. You have special classes like art, music, and PE. You have interventions in reading or spe, or special education or guidance. You have office space. You have all these little things that happen in a building too. So it's always hard to kind of make it all work. So if we would have wanted full-day kindergarten three years ago, we would need 87 classrooms, and we didn't have them. We didn't have that space at the time, and still at the time. Our, our kindergarten is at Moose Hill. So what we realized is we would need about 10 more kindergarten classrooms in that space to kind of pull it off and have space for art, music, library, and a cafeteria, gym space. So we didn't have that space. I'll kind of go over the numbers in a little bit. You know, we had 72 general ed classrooms in Matthew Thornton, North School and South School, and we had our, our classrooms at, at Moose Hill too. But we didn't have enough space to pull off full-day kindergarten at the time. We're about 10 classrooms short. So if you go to the next slide, you know, that led to the $34 million project that, that went to the voters. You know, and I, and I think one of the big regrets I see is I wish somehow we would have gotten here sooner because I, I knew that a similar-sized project back in 2017 or '18 was $9, $10, $11, $12 million. Those were the initial quotes we were getting from, from architects. So inflation was definitely not our friend in this process. By, by not being able to figure it out before COVID, it definitely, we paid a huge price. But, you know, this, this was the, the expansion we needed at the time to kind of make it all work. And it's unfortunate it didn't get passed. So if you go to the next slide. By the fall of 2023, when we were kind of building up to this project, we saw our first small class. And it kind of came out of nowhere. It was kind of a surprise, and I'll go over the numbers in a bit. But when it happened, we reached out to a, a group called DESDEC, and they do regional enrollment projections for, for everyone in the Northeast. We had them come study us, and, you know, my main question for them is, is this a blip? Or is this a pattern? Like, what's going on? And their conclusion at the time was, this is a blip because Lenedary was very unusual with, you know, just a high housing turnover rate. And that, what that means is new families will move in, old families move out. We had a pretty, we had a pretty steady flow for many years. And we were unique in the amount of new construction. So they were like, this is a blip. You know, I, I would, you know, go with your normal predictions and kind of go from there. So we went with them. So if you go to the next slide. There was that first small class. You know, it was about 100 kids smaller than what we're used to. And it, it didn't slow us down from that larger $34 million project. It kind of meant we had a three to four classroom buffer for the next five years, and that seemed like a right amount of buffer, you know, about seven or eight percent. And, you know, I think at the time too, we assumed a lot more families would come back into the school system because they would be able to access full-day kindergarten. So we were worried about growth. So it seemed like, you know, at the time, that, that $34 million project was, was the right move. So if you go to the next slide on, on page eight, unfortunately, we did not get that 60% threshold. That's what we need to finance and pass a bond and, and use taxpayer money for, for those needs. And we only got a 50% support for full-day kindergarten and 50%, 54% support to kind of expand Moose Hill for some of the preschool growth we had at the time too. So we weren't quite there. So if you go to the next slide, Jason? By last summer, you know, we had begun this process again, like, okay. If, you know, $34 million was, was too much money, I think our main interpretation at the time was, there's interest in full-day kindergarten? That was maybe too large of a price tag. Is, is there a more cost-efficient way to do it? And by last summer, we also saw another small class. 209 kids come in, so definitely historically smaller than what we've seen. We did see some, some kids come into first grade from that other small class, but we were down. And we were still short of space. But at the same time though, we were still looking for, for options for full-day kindergarten. And, you know, and, you know, what we kind of figured out at the time was that there probably were other ways to do this. And so if you go to the next slide, Jason? You know, what we were trying to get to was, was there a way to kind of move full-day kindergarten out of Moose Hill, potentially saving money and capitalizing on some of this, you know, extra space we kind of had? And we, we came up with a project that was basically building 85 general education classrooms in three schools, enough space for all of our special education programs, our specialist classes, the interventions, the office space. And it really was this multi-decade approach to, to the elementary schools. So if you go to the slide 11, Jason? You know, this was, this was the project. It was, you know, adding a couple of different modular classrooms in each school to make sure we had the capacity to, to, to build for full-day kindergarten as we saw it from last summer. You know, where there were still a lot of 300 kid classes and two small, two smaller classes in there too. So if you go to the next slide, yet again, we did not reach that 60% threshold. Very, very close. It got to 58%. It was about 100, you know, 30 kids, sorry, 130 votes short. And, you know, all of our capital costs and furniture needs were kind of in, in that Warren article that did not pass. You know, so I know a lot of families have asked us, well, what about this fall? So we, we don't have the space and we don't have the funds for furniture to kind of start full-day kindergarten right now. You know, we're, we're just not able to do it. I, I estimate right now, we're about three classrooms short. So we're really, really close, frustratingly close. You know, and, you know, I think to, to get to full-day kindergarten, there's a lot of reorganization that needs to happen within staff, and that's a big process. It's not something you can pull off in July. I know we've had a lot of people kind of ask us, can you do this by the fall? And I know there's a couple of teachers in, in the room, and I asked them in our last roundtable, what would you do if I sent an email, we're starting full-day kindergarten in, in, in the fall? And I think they would not feel ready. It's, it's not enough time to kind of get ready in a few, short period of time. And I think the other roadblock we kind of run into, at least for this fall, is Jason was doing a lot of work on the master schedule, the curriculum planning, the staff reorganization. That all paused when, when the vote was not positive, you know. So none of that work has continued. And, you know, I, I think, you know, politically, when, you know, the, the term no means no is said a lot. If the voters voted down, you're not allowed to do it. You know, so I think those are all the things that were the roadblocks for this fall. But if you go to the next slide. Are you showing them the right one? Yep, I'm on the right one. Okay. Here's where we are this summer. So we have a third really small class, and this class is even smaller than what we've seen in the last two years. So this, there's this, there's this pattern of rapidly declining enrollment we're seeing. So our current second grade is about a quarter smaller than what we've seen in the past. Our current first grade is about a quarter smaller than we've seen in the past. And now our incoming kindergarten, kindergarten class is 40% smaller. Those are huge changes. You know, we've tried to adapt to them, but, you know, as best we can, but these are really, a really big swing in a short period of time. And I know at some of the roundtable discussions, a lot of the parents were asking, well, how did all the other school districts get the full-day kindergarten? They just had the space. You know, I even look at Bedford. Bedford just went through the process, put it on a Warren article, got it passed. They had the space in their schools to do it. They just had to kind of change staff around. We were not so lucky before COVID and even after COVID to kind of have that space. But I do think things are changing. If we go to the next slide. You know, again, here's three small classes in a row. And, you know, even though, you know, our, our, our enrollment is down, I think it is providing us, you know, a clear pathway to pursue full-day kindergarten. I think what we have now is a pattern of smaller enrollment. We can see it. It's clear. It's three years in a row. I'd much rather be part of a school system where, where the problem isn't enrollment's going up rather than enrollment's going down because it's always a scary thing to have to kind of deal with. But we, we're, we're prepared for it and we can kind of work with it. And if you go to the next slide. I think what these three small classes have done for us is basically provided us a path to pursue full-day kindergarten without that 60% threshold because we don't need to worry about building classrooms to get there. And we didn't have that opportunity in 2022, or '23, or '24, or even this, or even this summer. But it will present to us by next year. So, you know, for us to be ready to, to start full-day kindergarten, the space needs to be clear, the staff needs to be clear, we need to have the furniture, we need to have the supplies. So, you know, kind of the rest of this presentation is to say, we will be ready for that one year from now. And that's how we can be organized for full-day kindergarten. So if you go to the next slide, Jason? I threw this in, this was in the board packet, but I, I threw this in and I can update on the website. I think we get a lot of questions, why is enrollment declining so rapidly? I think it's a whole host of factors kind of working together. I think summer economic, high cost of housing, high interest rates, and low housing availability, which jacks up the cost of houses. You know, when we're talking about a starter, a starter home costing $700,000, $800,000, that's a big, that's a big purchase. That was very different from even five years ago or 10 years ago. So it's harder for younger families maybe to be, to be moving into that, to that dynamic. Then you throw the, you know, the demographic factors. We still have an aging population. We're starting to see lower birth rates. I think it's hard for young families to move in and hard for older families to move out. I have some wonderful empty nesters or soon-to-be empty nesters not too far from me that have not sold their homes yet in Lenedary to replenish it with younger families. And that's okay because I think in the past, it was easy to kind of cash out on your home, find something cheaper at a lower interest rate. That world doesn't seem to be around us right now. So I think you have all these factors that are kind of playing each other. I think the economic and demographic are the biggest. But there's also us. We, we lack full-day kindergarten. You can go to Hudson. You can go to Derry. You can go to Bedford. You can go to Wyndham. You can get full-day kindergarten. All of our neighbors. You know, it's, it's us in Goffstown and that are, that are basically left. I think we've done tremendous work in the last couple of years to really move our public-facing numbers. I think when the US News and World Report comes out, we're going to look great. We weren't always there in some of those things. And, and I think our school district's doing great work. But I think when, when, when we compare to some of our, our neighbors, I think people might choose, choose them over us, but I think we're, we're doing great now. And obviously, school choice options are, are more relevant right now. So I think all those things together are really making the enrollment go down, and, and it's actually increasing in its speed, which is quite scary to watch. So if you go to the next slide, number 17. I think, you know, what we're seeing is, if we look to next year, we don't expect to get a sudden influx of kids back to this 300 number level. I think it's a more legitimate space for us to say that we're going to be back in these lower enrollments. So if we have about 216 kids, and I'll go into excruciating detail in a little bit about how much that can rise. Basically, because a year from now, we'll be graduating 306 fifth graders. Having 216 kindergartners come in, that frees up about four classrooms. There's your simple math. How do we get the space for full-day kindergarten? And, and, and that's, I think, where we're heading. So if you kind of go to the next slide. You know, this is the chart that kind of summed it up for me. Again, back in the summer of 2022, we had 1,745 kids in our K-15 classrooms. One year from now, we'll probably have 1,474. That is a huge decline in a short period of time. And it's even a big decline from last summer, where we had 1,610 kids. So, you know, last year's project, we needed 85 So, you know, last year's project, we, we needed eighty-five classrooms and with modulators in three schools to kind of pull this off. I think by this time next summer, we'll have about a hundred and forty less kids. That's about seven less classrooms. So that's a big change in a, in a big period of time. That's opening up a lot of space. And I, and I do think we can fit full day kindergarten within the three elementary schools. You know, kind of honoring last year's project and plan. And we're not going to overload North, South, or Matthew Thornton in this process. We're really just replacing kids we've lost over time, and I'll kind of go into a lot of detail in a little bit. So if we go back, if we go to slide number nineteen, I think the main question is, do we have space for full day kindergarten? And I think with three years of incoming small classes, we will be able to have the space to fit it in by twenty-six, twenty-seven. We can definitely handle growth in this process, and I'll go over that in a little bit. There doesn't seem to be a need to, to bring a capital project to the voters that would require a sixty percent majority at this time. Could there be points in the future where that happens? Yes, I think there could be. There could always be that. There could always be that in, in that, in, in our future or any future if, if you see increasing enrollment. I think Abby and Scott and Lisa did a wonderful job at Matthew Thornton to really look at the space and kind of really figure out how to, how to, how to bring this project forward. And we'll go over that in a little bit, but there's, there's a few walls we need to take down. They're all sheet rock, that are easy to do, that Joe and his building grounds team can kind of take on. And that would, that would get us one more classroom and, and make sure we have enough space also for also our intervention programs. But in a little bit, I'll kind of go over to, there, there is, I mean, one of the problems with Matthew Thornton is you have this nineteen forties wing where the classrooms are not nine-hundred square feet. They're like six-hundred-and-sixty. I think it would be really smart for us to combine some of those six-hundred-and-sixty-foot classrooms to make two modern nine-hundred-square-foot classrooms that have more space in that building, and you'll kind of see why in a little bit. So I think we do have the space by this time next fall. So if you go to the next slide, I'm going to go over a lot of enrollment projections in, in kind of the upcoming part of the, the presentation. And we built out multiple scenarios for each school because we really want, we really wanted to know, like, okay, if we know we can start in twenty-six, twenty-seven, what could the future be like? Where would we have problems? Where would we not have problems? So we're trying to build out a lot of different scenarios. And, you know, the good thing is, we, we know a lot of the kids right now. So when, when we look at the kids entering this fall, we know a hundred percent of them. We know them right now. Even two years out, we know about two-thirds of our kids, where we'd only be projecting K and one, but we already, we, we know what's in second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade from what we know right now. Because pretty much year after year, once they enter the school system, we don't see this dramatic change from each grade level. About the same number of kids that, that join us in first grade are there in fifth grade, are there in eighth grade, are there in twelfth grade. When you get farther out, obviously, you, you have less known, but even by twenty-thirty, we still know one-third of our kids. So we're pretty confident in our projections and, and, and thinking through our space needs kind of in this model. And I think for one year out, we know eighty-four percent of them, so we feel pretty good to confidently say we know we have the space. And, you know, what, what the principals did with excruciating detail, it took us about six, eight weeks to figure this all out, is, you know, they mapped out their buildings for the general education classrooms, they mapped out their buildings for specials, that's art, STEM, music, library, and gym, obviously looking at all of our special education programs, our special education case manager needs, and a lot of the intervention services. Those are the things they have to really have to plan out well for to kind of make sure this all works. So if you go to the next slide, this is definitely the busiest, busiest slide there is. But what we know right now is we know that North School can handle twenty-five general education classrooms and art and music and P E and all those other things I just talked about. You know, I think what we found from, from North School is, when we built it, we didn't build a lot of small group spaces. So a lot of times in North School, small group spaces eat up whole classrooms. That's where we become a little bit less efficient. But, but we're pretty confident, or we're very confident that we know we have space for twenty-five classrooms. South School's a little bit different. We have space for twenty-four classrooms and all of our special ed classrooms together. You know, I think what we're seeing is a big growth in our friends program, so a lot of our projection accounted for that moving forward and making sure we have enough space for all the small group needs, too. At Matthew Thornton, we have space for twenty-nine general education classrooms, so the total is seventy-eight. So when you, when people ask, how much space do you need for, you know, to run full day kindergarten? In, in our three schools, we would need space for seventy-eight or less. But again, I, I think there's a way where we can maximize space a little bit better, maybe use our capital reserves, maybe use surplus set asides. We'll have the cost next month to kind of reconfigure a little bit of that nineteen forties wing so we can get two more classrooms out of it because as you'll see, Matthew Thornton will still have the, the, kind of the tightest space moving forward. Underneath this is kind of all of our current classes where they are, are they at right now from first through fifth grade. And then this is the model we kind of built. We kind of took the kids we had and we kept moving them a year forward. And we started building models around the smaller class enrollment, two-hundred-and-ten, two-hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty, not this three-hundred anymore. You know, so, so most likely, you know, what we're going to see for, for classes at North School in the future is about seventy-two kids with each, each incoming group. At each elementary school, for kindergarten purposes, we can only have eighteen kids in a class because it's a nine-hundred square foot classroom. You can't go above it. So we're projecting, you know, each year from now on, most likely about four, four classrooms of kids at North School. South School is seeing a little bit more rapid declining enrollment. And, you know, next year's first grade could be even smaller than we've seen where they might only have fifty-one kids. So that's a, that's a big change for South School, and we're obviously keeping an eye on that. So, you know, we're projecting, I think, moving through or forward, probably three, three classes of, of kids at South School. And for Matthew Thornton, you know, we spent the last couple of years getting about eighty new kids each year, so we, we kind of built a model around ninety, that, that five, five classrooms of, of kindergarten. So if you put that all together, you know, we would need seventy-five general classrooms, and again, we have seventy-eight. So I think we'll have the space and we'll have a buffer of two to three classrooms within, within the schools in general. So if you go to the next slide, which is twenty-two, this is North School with a lot of detail. So what we built out was, again, I think the most likely scenario and what we teased out as a group was most likely North School will see these four new classes every year, about eighteen kids in a class. You know, if, if, if that holds true, we're never, we're never going to get above that twenty-five threshold. So we'll, we should have space in North School for the rest of the decade. If North School suddenly had a big twenty-five percent jump in enrollment, that's again, a huge jump from, from where we've been the last couple of years. You know, we would be at that twenty-five threshold, probably in that first year and that second year, and maybe go, maybe go above it in, in that by twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or twenty-nine, thirty. But again, that's a huge jump. That's a twenty-five percent jump in enrollment. We have not seen that type of growth. So that would be something that's very big, that we think that's very unlikely. And I think, you know, if, if that does come to be, it doesn't mean that school suddenly stops and you can't do anything. It means you have to get really creative with how you use your specials, and maybe you start rotating your specials in some way, and it's something that North School has done in the past. And, you know, Paul's the best to talk about it. If you look to the right, what you can see is, you know, back in two thousand and eighteen, we had, you know, four-hundred-and-eighty, four-hundred-and-ninety, almost five-hundred kids in North School for, for a considerable period of time. And again, that was that very consistent, stable enrollment. Boom, then we fell off the cliff. So if you look at the end of that chart, even if we bring full day kindergarten back into North School, they're not even as high as they used to be. You know, so again, we're, we're not overloading the buildings. We're just replacing the kids that were not there. And, you know, and, and I think, you know, we were closely with all the, the schools. We kind of figured out, you know, the point where we have to consider modulators. So North School would probably, we probably need to start talking about a modular if we had five-hundred-and-twelve kids come at us. You know, that would be about fifty more than the projection we have for twenty-six, twenty-seven. That doesn't seem likely, but then we kind of know our threshold of when things, we have to consider modulators. If you go to South School, it's the next page on twenty-three. Again, so we kind of played out a couple of different scenarios. So, you know, we think South School is going to see three, three groups of classes every year from now on. If that were the case, we're not going to come anywhere near their, their, their threshold for the next decade. They probably will drop a little bit because they have a bunch of bigger classes in fourth and fifth grade. Even if they had a thirty-three percent jump in enrollment, which does not seem very likely right now, to have ninety kids in a class or, or even, you know, somewhere near it, we would still not hit their threshold. So, so South School definitely has the most space, and that also accounts for all the growth we've seen in the friends program over the last couple of years, too. So if you look at the chart on the right, it's kind of the, the line graph. Again, South School used to have about four-hundred-and-eighty kids in it, and then it took a dip and it rose again, and then we've seen big drops the last couple of years. And even if we added full day kindergarten in the South School, we'd only be probably around four-hundred-and-thirteen kids. So South School does have the space. We, we, we wouldn't be overloading it. But if we, if we did get back up to that four-hundred-and-eighty level, that's where we have to consider modulators for South School. If you go to the next slide, number twenty-four. I know there's a lot of detail. I can see glassy eyes out in front of me, but we'll get there. We'll get there for questions. Matthew Thornton's the most complicated, and it kind of, there's, there's a couple of different moving parts here, but I draw two thresholds. So again, right now, I think the admin team did a wonderful job finding an additional classroom within their plan for, for minor construction, and I applaud them for it. But, you know, most likely, you know, I mean, enrollment's come down in Matthew Thornton, but not as much as, as the other two. But if, if we're building a school around ninety kids coming every year, or five sections, we'll probably be right at that threshold for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and we'll probably dip below it. If for a sudden, you know, they got a, a big jump in enrollment again, you know, back up to six, you know, basically six, sixth grade or six classrooms per grade, we would be above that threshold, and we'd probably have to start talking about modulators for that building around twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Or, you know, what, what I think what we're recommending is, you know, let's look more closely at that nineteen forties wing and see if we can't more efficiently use some of our space there to build full-size, modern, nine-hundred-square-foot classrooms. Clearly, there is, there's a point in time where we were putting full classrooms of kids in here when we had a thousand kids in that building. I'm not comfortable putting, you know, twenty-two to twenty kids in a six-hundred-square-foot classroom at this point in time. I know it probably happened in the past, but I would, I would definitely not recommend it. So if you go to the next slide, you know, so we would need to see, you know, again, kind of a big jump in enrollment to not fit in, in Matthew Thornton, like that twenty-seven percent jump to get to a hundred and eight kids. It doesn't seem very likely from the last three years of very small enrollment that we've seen, but that's where we know we'd have to kind of discuss modulators. And then on the right-hand side is that line graph, you know, so, you know, for a number of years, Matthew Thornton kind of hovered between five-hundred-and-forty or even down to five-hundred kids, but it's up and come back up again. If full day kindergarten is kind of approved and we make it happen for next year, they would go up to five-hundred-and-eighty. But again, we have room for that at the building. I think we'd have to consider a modular in that building around six-hundred-and-fifteen kids. So we still have room for about thirty to forty kids within that. And I, I wouldn't expect to get that many more kids for kindergarten in first grade, but that, that's, that would be, we have to kind of keep an eye on. And again, I think investing in the nineteen forties wing is the right way to go there. So if you go to the next slide, kind of a quick, quick summary. So we can fit full day kindergarten in our three schools, elementary schools, North, South, and Matthew Thornton by twenty-six, twenty-seven. These three small classes in a row have provided this opportunity, you know, and obviously decreased, decreased our space needs. So we're down about twelve classrooms since we began this process three summers ago. So again, that's a big change, and that's why we're able to say this. And it's obviously different than what we were looking at in the past. You know, we have to invest in minor construction in Matthew Thornton and potentially slightly larger, I think, to make more classrooms if we wanted to. And again, I think, you know, if you look at the numbers, for North School not to fit, we need to have like a hundred and eight more kids than what we're projecting right now. That's a big twenty-five percent jump. I don't think a big twenty-five percent jump is coming. To not fit in South School, we need, we need to have a hundred and forty-eight more kids than we have right now. That's a thirty-three percent jump. I don't think those numbers are coming based on the demographics and the economics and all the things I talked about. For Matthew Thornton, it's a little bit different. It's an eight percent jump. We're fifty-four kids above, you know, the projected enrollment for, for twenty-six. So again, that's why I think we should invest in that nineteen forties project and kind of look at that more closely later in the year. So that's those three schools. We go to the next slide. What does this mean for Moose Hill? So this, this means Moose Hill is a, is a, is a preschool only. You know, moving full day kindergarten to three elementary schools would leave the preschool at Moose Hill. I think one financial benefit of this is, we have these leases of these two portables we put there seven years ago, eight years ago. It was a while now, and it was supposed to be temporary. That's forty-four thousand dollars. That company has not been good to work with. They will not let us buy them. They're continually trying to raise the price on that lease. You know, so I think it's good to get rid of that lease and save that forty-four thousand dollars. Our preschool would probably take up about twelve classrooms of the sixteen that are left. And that's for preschool classrooms, special education programs, related services. And, you know, when we, when we began this process in twenty-two, you know, when we walked around Moose Hill, we talked a lot about the closets that have become speech therapy or all the things that are kind of moved into the hallway. So that would have, that would end, which is great. We, we don't want classrooms and closets. We don't want all the things that we're kind of doing now to make Moose Hill work. You know, so we'd have about four classrooms that obviously could be mothballed or used as swing space if we ever see, you know, large swings in enrollment we're not ready for, so it's good to have that swing space. You know, the, the, the district office is a separate conversation now. But, you know, one thing we're losing now in the district office, if it goes to the center of town, is we, we have a professional development space we use throughout the year. We could consider that in Moose Hill. And I think, you know, just some brainstorming at the district office level is, you know, our, our Moose Hill team does amazing work. I am sure lots of preschools would love to send their kids to us that have special needs. That could be a tuition-based thing for us. I think we would do excellent work there. You know, I think we also talked about, is, is there any appetite in town to, to build childcare options for our staff there within a preschool? I don't know. You know, I mean, those are things we can probably talk about if, if we have some space there. So if you go to the next slide. This is very complicated stuff, and I, and I think, you know, I was trying to make this as simple as possible, and I'm probably not doing a very good job of that. But I think, you know, the, the, the summary for me is, if you look back at the summer of twenty-twenty-two when we began this process, we had two-hundred-and-seventy more kids. That's about as how many kindergartners we serve in Moose Hill at least four or five years ago. Now it's down to two-hundred. So what, what I'm basically saying is, we don't have the need to use that space for two-hundred-and-seventy kids. We have lost that many children in this process. And it's sad, you know, we, we don't want to be in this place. But we no longer have the need to have our K through five system in four schools with this big drop in enrollment, and it's big, big. And that's a sad fact, but that's kind of where we're heading, and I think we have to be smart. If enrollment comes back up, great. I would love to have that problem. That's a, that's a, that's a much better problem to have than looking at declining enrollment. The next slide, if we go to it, you know, we've, we've had some questions along the way at the roundtables. What do parents really think? We've consistently surveyed the community. We did this back in like two thousand and seventeen and eighteen. We did it back in the summer of twenty-twenty-four. Time and again, what, what, what most community members and families tell us is, just find a way to find full day kindergarten. That's at Orange. Where it's at, I'll, I'll work with it. I'll work with you guys. We just need to have it. And I, and I know there's a contingent in town that, that loves Moose Hill. We all love Moose Hill. Like, I'm sad thinking about not being zero the hero. I love going there every year and jumping around in the cape for the five-year-olds. And it makes me sad not to think about going there. But I also see, you know, the benefits of full day kindergarten, and unfortunately, you know, declining enrollments have got us to this place, and we can capitalize on it. We can move ahead without having to ask for that sixty percent vote. And I know there is a contingent about, you know, thirteen percent or fifteen percent or twenty percent that really love Moose Hill, and we all love Moose Hill. But I think we've lost too many kids in the last couple of years. So if you go to the last slide, I know this kind of came up at our last roundtable, but what about class size? So everything we've teased out is, we're keeping class size as is. Right now, in general, it's not, it's not every single classroom, but, but nearly all of our K to five classrooms are somewhere between eighteen to twenty-two kids. Some in first and second grade, maybe kindergarten are below that. We did have a big bubble in second grade in one of our buildings. We corrected for that in the, in the budget process this year, so we don't, we're not above twenty-two. But in general, we're in eighteen to twenty-two kids. All of our models that we just presented are between eighteen and twenty-two kids. So we're not changing class size. We're not raising class size. Obviously, that was one way we could have achieved full day kindergarten, but I wouldn't want to stress out our system, or stress out our teachers, or stress out the things that kind of go on to, to kind of achieve that. So we can make this change and, and basically maintain normal class size in this process and get a hundred and three days of more, of more school for our five-year-olds. That's huge. That's a huge boost to our system. We're always playing catch-up in first and second grade, always. It is such a hard job anyway, so to be able to give them that additional time seems to be a huge benefit while keeping class size as is. So that's the, that's the big stuff on enrollment and space, and then I'll try and round it out on staffing, furniture, and curriculum supplies next on the next slide. So those are the hardest hurdles to clear. It looks like we've cleared them, but there's a couple of small ones along the way, too. So staffing, what does this mean for staffing? In general, I think we have enough staff to pull this off by the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. I'll give you some figures. They're, they're rough. They have not gone through the whole budget process. The whole budget process is a wonderful three months of all of our lives in this room where you go through a lot of detail, but we've teased that enough with a lot of confidence. But in general, we're graduating these, these classes of kids that are, you know, three-hundred in fourth and fifth grade and bringing in two-hundred. We'll have the staff to be able to start full day kindergarten because these, these bigger grades are graduating and we're bringing in, you know, smaller classes. So, you know, I think what we need right now is seventy-five K to five classroom teachers to pull off full day kindergarten, and I think we have them within our, within our. teachers to pull off full-day kindergarten, and I think we have them within our, within our needs right now. There's a reorganization we have to go through, but we have the staff to do this, and we can tease it out throughout the budget process. So that's like the high level. If you go to the next slide. I think one thing that, that kind of surprised us in this process is, we weren't trying to save money. We were mostly looking at, how can we find the space to pull off full-day kindergarten? But I think one thing we realized is, moving from four schools to three schools, is we're going to condense overall in staff and probably save money in this process, which is why it will be cheaper to, to do this. And it's mostly because when you go from four to three schools, we already have specialist teachers in art, music, and et cetera at Matthew Thornton, North School, and South School. We already have special education teachers and programs. We already have related services and other support staff. So there's this natural condensing that's going to happen that would actually save money in this process. And, you know, and we're, and again, we're just simply refilling the students in North and South School and increasing Matthew Thornton by a little bit. So there'll be this reorganization that happens without this huge expansion of staff. So, and, you know, and we will get, we will get to lower costs, and that was not one of our goals, but it is something we kind of realized along the way. So if you go to the next slide. You know, so again, I think what this would, what this would require is we're, you know, we're, we're shifting five kindergarten teachers from Moose Hill into the elementary schools, and then we're probably shifting other teachers around to, to teach full-day kindergarten. And then there's some excellent first and second grade teachers that would, that would probably relish that opportunity, and we, we'd find a way to make it work. You know, we would have an instructional assistant in every one of those kindergarten classrooms like we have at Moose Hill right now. I think we would probably need to increase the part-time staff at Matthew Thornton for, that are teaching specials, because our, our specialist teachers are based on teaching twenty-five sections. If we're at twenty-nine, we'll probably need a little bit more, so we would use the budget process to kind of fill, figure that out. And, and again, you know, we have the staff for Allied Health, Special Ed, and, and the, and the support staff at the buildings that are going to take this on. Our goal is to, is to not have a reduction in force. That, that's not why we, we started this process or kind of went through it, but I think we can capitalize on natural attrition and, and people retiring, to be able to have this larger reorganization of staff, still save money, and still, and still have full-day kindergarten. So that'd be a big process that we can definitely take on. We would use the budget process to, to figure that out, look at all the different moving pieces. But that's what we're looking at right now. So if you go to the next slide. You know, I think our estimation, and again, this is not a budget-ready number. This is not a finalized thing. We would probably, we would probably save about four hundred thousand dollars in staff, and that's just moving from four to three schools. And we would, again, we're not, we're not seeking any reduction in force. We're just kind of shrinking around a lower enrollment and kind of adjusting staff to that, and we would find those natural retirements and, and, you know, natural attrition to kind of get to that level. You know, if in the budget process the enrollment goes up or down, we can change that number, and, and obviously, we would be able to review it more closely from September, October, and November to, to really nail a solid number. We have not looked at paraprofessional staff. That's a whole separate analysis we have to do. I think we want to get the school year started, figure out how many paraprofessional staff we have in our buildings. But again, enrollment is down, so we're not seeing the need to having to add paraprofessional staff in this process. So again, even though we're adding full-day kindergarten, we still think we've had smaller staff costs in the end. Okay, next slide. And again, this, this was not one of our goals. It's just one of the things we kind of discovered along the way as we were really teasing out all the details. You know, and I think one thing I would share is, you know, last year, within the process of, of searching, you know, for, for the, the right way to move forward, I did propose a model where we kept full-day kindergarten at Matthew Thornton, you know, in that process. What we found is, it's actually, we would save more money if, if we shifted to three schools than, than kept that model. I think we would save about four hundred thousand dollars moving to three schools, but if we kept full-day kindergarten at Matthew Thornton, we would only save about a hundred and fifty. So I think that, that was definitely another factor in me for realizing, you know, why we should continue down the path of last year's project and make sure we have a viable way to, to move forward on full-day kindergarten. More financial stuff. If you go to the next slide. State aid. What we learned last year is we'd actually get a hefty chunk of state aid from, from New Hampshire for having a full-day kindergarten program. We leave a lot of money on the table right now by not having it. We would gain about twenty-one hundred dollars a kid, so we would, we would, we would gain about four hundred and sixty grand in additional revenue for, for each budget year that we, that we have full-day kindergarten. And we also learned from last year's process, we'd save about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars on midday bus runs. Those are two huge savings by pursuing full-day kindergarten even before we get to, to staff savings. If you go to the next slide. These are all the details. I mean, they seem more minor in the end, but we want to make sure we do our due diligence. We don't have the budget for kindergarten classrooms. School furniture is really expensive. I don't know if the general public actually knows that, because it has to be durable. It has to be fireproof. It has to kind of meet code, and it has to last for a long time. And kindergarten stuff is actually very specialized, so we're probably about five classrooms or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short in, in that kindergarten classroom right now, so we need to budget for that. And, you know, we can use the budget process for that. We're also short on curriculum supplies. We've been, we've been carrying out a half-day kindergarten program for years. We've never fully invested in that full-day program, so there probably is about fifty thousand dollars in curriculum costs that we would have to budget for in this process. We can, we can refine that in the budget season. So if you go to thirty-nine, you know, I think what we're kind of seeing is, there are some costs, furniture, curriculum supplies, and, you know, minor, minor project at Matthew Thornton, and a potentially bigger project at Matthew Thornton. And we'll know those numbers by September. But between the midday bus runs of saving two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, saving on the modular at, at Moose Hill, staff savings, and increased state aid, you know, we're, we're probably almost a million dollars in, in the good for, for pursuing this. So to get full-day kindergarten and to have that benefit for the taxpayers, I, I would hope we can kind of rally behind, behind that. Again, you know, these are not budget-ready numbers. These are all estimates. I mean, we studied it pretty well, but we would have the budget season to kind of get into the details. If you go to the next slide. You know, again, there was a financial strength to last year's plan. Somehow, that didn't land on all voters. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping, you know, we can, we, we do a better job of communicating and making it clear that this actually saves us money. There's a big financial benefit in the end while getting something that's a huge, huge benefit for our five-year-olds and all those first-grade teachers and second-grade teachers right after them. So if you go to the next slide, if you look at kind of the timeline of everything, you know, we're still in the summer, even though all the administrators in the room feel the pitter-patter of school coming back to us in a few weeks. You know, we have time to, to kind of build this into the operating budget, and, you know, we present our operating budget on November twenty-fifth. So if we pursue this route, we would have all the details figured out by November twenty-fifth, which is about three months from now. And we could also do this in a, in a separate majority warrant article, so this would not be one of the warrant articles where you need sixty percent support. You just need fifty point one percent. It'd be a weird warrant article, because you'd basically be saying, do you want full-day kindergarten to save money? I don't know who would vote against that, but, you know, people could vote against that. I mean, people vote against our federal grants every year. It's about ten to fifteen percent of, of the public. But either way, you know, what we're seeing is low, lower overall costs on staff savings, midday bus runs, and that increased state aid. And obviously, you know, this is, this is something that would be still part of our long budget process every year that starts in November and concludes in March with that town vote. But from what we're seeing right now is, we don't think we need to pursue that, that capital project back. If you go to the next slide. In terms of the program, again, Jason had done a lot of work last year to kind of set up getting the full-day kindergarten, so I think we just kind of reignite the fires there. There's already a lot of work that's been done, but we have to kind of commit to it again. You know, we have to develop master schedules in each of the buildings to, to pull this off, that, that is actually, you know, there's a lot of work to be done there, and we'd have to transition the curriculum to full day. And, you know, having a whole year to do that, that gives us a lot of time. Every year, there's a number of teachers that, they might be a fourth-grade teacher, and in April, they're told they're going to be a second-grade teacher, so they have a few months to plan. This is, this is ten, twelve, you know, ten, twelve months to kind of get ready. So I think we have plenty of time to kind of get there to make sure we have our, we have our master schedules, we have our, our full-day curriculum ready to go. And then I think the last moving piece is kind of the reorganization. So I think, you know, reorganizing staff is something we would take on in the administrative budget. We'd kind of really need to think through whatever all of our student needs and kind of match the staff to that. And through that process, we would know generally how many people might need to move around within all four schools to kind of make this all work. And then I think once we figure that out, we would want to partner with staff and really think through, what's their best long-term fit? Where do they want to be? What do they want to be doing? Is it a grade level? Is it a school? You know, what's more important? But, you know, there'll be a lot of moving pieces, and we've, we've actually seen that already, because with some of this declining enrollment, staff are starting to move grade[1198.77]
So, those are all the moving pieces. There's a lot there. I know there's a ton there. I'll stop and see if there are questions, comments, other information. I know Jason worked on the agenda. How did you, how did you view the next segment here? How did you, how did you view the next segment here after I'm done speaking?
So I just thought that if we received community input and if the administration can answer questions tonight, it certainly will, but where the board is, is looking at this for the first time along with the rest of the community, they're not prepared to have answers tonight. In the future, we certainly will have a work session where there'll be a lot more dialogue and a lot more back and forth. And hopefully a lot more answers as we move forward.
So, yeah, what I'd like to do is invite anyone up that has some questions.
Okay, I do have a question. Currently, there's a lot of space at North School, correct? We have space, right? Do we still have modular there?
Yes.
Are we renting that?
No, we purchased it.
Okay, if there is space there, so now we own it, so it really doesn't matter. Okay.
Yep.
LEAP.
Yes.
Where our declining enrollment is happening all over the place, and it's not just Lunedary. Is LEAP declining in enrollment also, or is that increasing?
The best person to answer that question is right there.
Hi, Kim.
Hi. So we are actually not declining. We are actually at our highest numbers since I started taking data. Because Dan likes a lot of data, I added another data point to see where those kids are coming from. And the majority are coming from early supports and services, so their children already identified with delays.
And that's kind of what started this years ago, is the growth in LEAP was just pushing everything on Moose Hill. And, you know, we were putting classrooms in closets and all these other things we had to do. So that, that's kind of how we got here too, and that has not changed.
And I'll also say our children with more intensive needs have also increased. Children on the autism spectrum, children with medical, medical needs have greatly increased over the past couple of years.
Can you just speak to the early supports and services and how that process works? Because this comes up every time, and I think the majority of the public doesn't know how that works when kids are identified before they're three, and that's federally mandated and all of that stuff. Do you mind just reviewing that?
Sure. So, up to nine months prior to their third birthday, we might get a referral from the early supports and service team. We then meet with the families. We talk about a transition plan, which usually involves our evaluating the children, determining if they're eligible for special education in the public school. Within, by their third birthday, we have to have a signed IEP in place. So, pretty much we have a very strong relationship with early supports and services. In fact, it was one of our saving graces during COVID. We were able to work close with those team members to continue our evaluation process because our evaluation process did not stop because of the pandemic. So again, we have very strong relationships with our early supports and service team.
Thank you. I think sometimes we hear like preschool, and it seems like we're like looking for students. So I just wanted you to highlight that they're coming.
I know. I happen to say, you know, I'm not out there with an ice cream van, you know, hunting down kids. We, we just happen to have a very good program in the Lunedary School District, and a lot of families do move here because of our strong, our strong programming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other, just comment. These numbers look great. My taxes are going to be better than they are now, I guess. But who knows? I'm still not an advocate for splitting up Moose Hill. I still would like to see Moose Hill stay together. Just from seeing all this for the first time also, it looks like we need 10 classrooms to do full day K 26, 27, if I'm correct?
No, I think what I was trying to say is back in 2022, we needed to add 10. But our, but our numbers have shrunk so much since then, we don't need to add any.
We only need to add eight.
We don't need to add any in terms of physical space.
Right.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, right now, we have, as far as I know, still six kindergarten classrooms. So if we had full day, we would need 12 kindergarten classrooms.
Eleven or 12 probably.
Okay, so come this projected enrollment for full day K, how many classrooms are we going to need for kindergarten? Are we down to 10?
It depends what comes in. You know, I, what we tried to build was as conservative as possible, probably 11, maybe 12 at most, but somewhere in that 10 to 12 range.
Okay, so right now Moose Hill has eight classrooms.
Six kindergarten.
Six, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay. This takes a lot of digesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, sorry. I do have a few questions. So, in the paperwork, you said that, obviously as she just mentioned, you have six current kindergarten classrooms. That's for the incoming 25, 26 year, correct? I don't know if I'm wrong. I want to say at the kindergarten info night, we were told there were going to be roughly seven. So did we get a drop in enrollment already? Okay.
Yeah, so last year, again, I think when we were budgeting, I mean, we were, we were still assuming maybe we would get 240 kids.
Okay.
That did not happen, so now we're down to 180. So that's why we have six.
All right, so we have six currently.
Yeah.
But you're saying we're only going to make five classrooms across the three schools?
Nope, we would probably make 10 or 11, maybe 12. And so, you know, I think, I got to find an easy way to explain this. There'll be a reorganization. So there might be some first grade teachers that now become kindergarten teachers. There might be some third grade teachers that become kindergarten teachers to kind of make this all work within this. Because again, these big classes are graduating in fifth grade, so we'll have access.
Correct, because part of what you're saying is you're going to have the, where is it? The influx in the 2100 per student for the full day kindergarten increase, but technically you're going to be losing the per 321 graduating class. You wouldn't really have that influx, really. We would just not be losing as much.
Yeah, that's another way to look at it, because our 12th graders, once they graduate, we no longer get money for that.
Correct, because I want to say it was $674,000 that we get from the 12th grade.
Sure.
So technically, we're losing that money. My question is, is as Kim mentioned, we have the largest LEAP, so early education program enrollment. But we're saying that the paras are not part of the cost in all of this, but the paras are what are needed for all of those early education programs, students.
Yep, so we, we didn't change any paraprofessionals kind of in our, in our model now.
Okay. But we're also saying that we're not going to have any too much of a shift in staff. But if we are having more of them historically, at least right now by the enrollment, aren't we going to need more of them? So we're going to need more for cost for those staff members as well.
We don't know that. That's something we would kind of tease out in the budget process, because you got to kind of see all the needs. I mean, so Ms. Carpione, who runs student services, every year her and her team kind of do this very big process to figure out how many paraprofessionals we need. We haven't done that yet.
So that would be dictated by the IEPs?
Yep.
So that's a recommendation based on the student needs?
Correct.
So every year when we do the budget, that, like, those IEP needs are going to be reviewed in that annual budget as opposed to as a part of a project? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of separate from this process?
No, I do understand that. My son, for example, is on IEP. We have two kids who are autistic. But the point is, when do you do that separate budgeting then for those paraprofessionals? Because essentially, it would impact some of this.
September through November.
So already when the school's starting?
Because you're projecting for next year.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have the paraprofessionals we need right now for this year. We use the budget process to figure out the following year.
So just to clarify, that number wouldn't be a part of that budget, because that's an individual student need, right? This, this would be kindergarten, and then that would be the student service budget?
Yeah, I mean, again, it's all one big budget.
Right.
This is a separate piece of it.
We wouldn't be voting on like para support in the budget? That would be a student service, so that would be teased out, not in a, on our level?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I just remind everybody, say your name and address too, please, before you start?
Hi, I'm Caitlin, 113 Wiley Hill Road in Lunedary.
Thank you.
So I have two questions. So we're talking about saving all this money in all different ways, but I'm concerned about the kids that aren't getting their needs met at LEAP. So we're already at the highest capacity numbers that we're seeing, but we're still not supporting all of the children in town that do need services at this time. With all this money saved, can we use it to give more student services that aren't receiving them? So my son, he has multiple diagnoses, but he has an IQ of 124 out of 130. He is not educationally deficit. Kim Carpione told me to my face, it is my job as his mother to get my child private services if he needs minimal supports. That was wrong, and it was something that will always stick with me that she said that. But for somebody that has a background in early childhood, if we're getting these kids the services that we need early, as they get older, they're not going to need as many services because they've already received things to help them cope. Is that something that's going to be into play? Are we going to spend more in the LEAP programming, getting kids things that, just because they're not educationally deficit doesn't mean they're not deficit in other areas. He struggles socially and emotionally and with routines and things like that. But because he has a 124 IQ, he did not get services. And people can't afford the services that are presented because it is so expensive through your insurance. He did go to LEAP but did not receive services. I sent him there as a typical student so that he would hopefully get a red flag waved, but he's too smart, so he did not. Is that something that we're going to?
Again, so I mean, I think, you know, try, try to keep things simple. I understand your question. What I was trying to show is, full day kindergarten has a separate part of the budget. That, that's what this is behind here. Then we have this big $90 million process to try and make sure we, we meet all of our needs. So that's a whole separate process in the budget. You know, so I can't, I can't speak to all the budget pressures we have right now. But, you know, what happens is, you know, every building advocates for what they need for, every department advocates for what we need for, and we try and make the, the best decisions we can with limited resources.
I do, I get that.
Yeah.
I think that there's a lot of kids that aren't going without things, and then they're getting pushed on to first grade, and now it's going to be their problem because they weren't educationally deficit enough. And autistic children aren't always educationally deficit, and we're excluding a whole group of people here by saying, by using that words, by using those words. So that's a big concern.
Sure.
And then we talked a lot about saving money, but where are you going? Where is the district office going to be going?
Separate process. So later this evening, you know, the, the new town manager was here. There's been discussions around kind of bringing it back to the center of town, right next to town hall. That's a whole separate process.
Okay, so we're not using the, the saved money for grownups. We're using that for the kids.
Yeah, that, that would be ideal, yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
Karen Kearney, 20 Hazelnut. Jason, can you do me a favor? Can you just pull up 21, slide 21? So, since I'm home for the summer, I've done a lot of first grade math. And I just want to, want to just look at the numbers because when you look at the average number of kids that are going to be in each classroom, if we just look at first grade going across the board, north and south, they're in great shape. They're looking at like 17 or 18. But there was a drop in first grade classrooms at Matthew Thornton to four, and that's getting us to 20 to 21. And then the next year, when we take those 90 kids and bring them into first grade, we're looking at 23 or 24.
No, there's, there's, there's five.
So you would add a first grade classroom?
Yeah, what, what we're trying to project is, I mean, you can't see it in here, but there's a whole model we built for each year.
Okay.
So if, if 90 kids come in, that's probably five classrooms.
Sure.
If 78 come in, that's probably four.
Even that 82?
Yep.
You know, I've been in first grade for a long time, and our number's typically 17, 18, 19, not very often 21 or 22. So that's a lot of herding cats. So I just want you to make sure, because you know, when you look at 21 or 22 in first grade, that's really different than 21 or 22 in third grade or fourth grade. So I just want to make sure that you're going to drill down into that to really make sure what those class sizes look like. Okay, great.
But, but no one likes when I make this statement. There's never, there's not a lot of good research around small class size having a benefit on kids. I know it creates a lot more stress, and I've, and I've done the research, but I'll say that too.
Okay, but I also think that the second grade class at Matthew Thornton last year should be something that we learn from.
Yeah, I know, definitely bigger, for sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
Nate Greenberg, Lori Lane, Lunedary. First, I want to thank the administration and the board for putting this information out. I think it's extremely important, and it was extremely well done, so I want to thank you guys for doing that. Moving ahead, as you look at the whole process, I think there may be some things that you may want to keep in mind, which are more on the technical end than anything else. Whether or not this proposal is going to be included in the budget or as a separate warrant article, and I think you're going to have to discuss that in public so that the community clearly understands why you're going to do one thing versus the other. I think that, that would be extremely important. The other thing too, I've learned since I've been retired, is that I don't necessarily have my daily focus on the schools like I did when I was working. And I'm willing to bet that there is a large population in town that basically feels the same way, behaves the same way I do at this point in my life. So I think having a simple, as you go through this, one page or two page thing that can be given out, that's simple and clean, and provide that information to the community at large. Also, like you had in the past roundtables, but maybe neighborhood coffees to invite other people in, I think, and to discuss it. Similar to what was done in the dark ages when I was working here. When we had building projects going through, we had neighborhood coffees. And if I remember, at one of the first kindergarten roundtables, a large group of kindergarten parents said that they would be willing to participate in this stuff, and maybe having them do it would be important. I think not the fact that, I think people have to realize too, the fact that if you run this as a separate warrant article, because it's not a capital issue, it just needs a simple majority. So you need 51% instead of the 60%. So I think that's got to be laid out for everyone so people understand that and that's clear and get that information out. I think that would be very important to do it. The other thing on the quote unquote cost savings, I think what you've got to remember is it's cost avoidance more than cost savings. All right, so when you look at the revenue, the additional revenue that would come in and the reduction in cost for staff, what hopefully that will do will have a positive impact on your tax rate. All right, so it's not like all of a sudden you have this bundle of $442,000 or whatever the case may be as far as savings is concerned. So I think that's, that's important for people to understand. And it's part and parcel of the entire budget, which you're balancing out. So I think that's really important, looking at the revenues. It's really important too, because I think as noted in the presentation, just as a reminder to everybody, federal money is a bit on the inconsistent side this time around, and not knowing what you're going to get for federal money. Also, sometimes too, what you're going to get for state money also tends to flow from year to year, from minute to minute, and so on, which has been a habit in the past. But I think this is a great proposal. A lot of really hard work has gone into it and very thoughtful, and I'm glad to see you moving forward with it. That's my two cents for the night.
Thank you, Nate.
Good evening. Tony DiFrancesco, Chester Court. So, first things first, my wife texted me and said, please, whoever's getting the one text every eight seconds, please remove your phone from the table because it's buzzing into the microphones, and put your phone in your lap. So, this is a different room than the, than the cafeteria. The topic at hand, this is, this is amazing work, and congratulations to Superintendent Jason, Assistant Superintendent, and whoever else, I'm sure the myriad of dozens of people who, who helped put this, this thing together. It's very concise, it's very understandable, and it's easy to tease individual things out and explain them to people who are not plugged in. I would say it's an, it's an easy thing to say that people with my color hair in this community are not plugged in at all and have no clue what's going on. Many of them, we have to explain how to get to the place where we vote every March. I will also tell you that the new assessments are out. They're on the website. It's not pretty. But I will also, to you, because phones are going to start ringing, and to everyone who's listening and watching this on YouTube, because apparently it's not making it through the regular cable channels. But for anyone who's going to watch this later on, understand that the, the new assessments, you, you don't multiply the new assessments times the current tax rate of $16.14. That's not how it works. The new assessment is going to be assessed on the new tax rate that comes out in October. That new tax rate is, is formulated by the DRA up in Concord. But I've, I have personally gotten quite a few phone calls already from people with their hair on fire saying, oh my God, my assessment went up $100,000. And I did the math, and this is crazy, nobody can afford this, and that's not how it works. So please, help get that word out there so that people can understand that, that the number that you're seeing now, your assessment is correct. How much you have to pay is going to be different once the, the new tax rate comes out in October. I will tell you, as a former teacher with a kindergarten through 12 certification and a master's degree in education, that there is no question in my mind that, that the way to go, and by the way, I taught in every school in the district, except for the kindergarten. But there's, there's no way that someone can convince me, this is one person individually, that having the kindergarten kids in the neighborhood schools is not the way to go. One person's opinion, it's definitely the way to go. If for no other reason, it's one less transition. They're in the school with their older brother, sister, or whatever. The, the fact that we had the opportunity to have a standalone kindergarten for half-day kids was a wonderful experiment. Seemed to work out pretty well. Seemed to have everybody happy in it. And you know what? Nobody likes change. Nobody. I don't talk in generalizations, ever. You know that about me. But I will tell you, I will tell you, that nobody likes change. And this is just yet another change that people are going to get used to. And frogs are not going to have five legs. The kids are going to be fine. Life is going to be good. I will also say that in aping what Nate had to say, the cost avoidance thing is, is something that, that's sure that you, that you need to look at. But, but I would lean more towards the, personally, I would lean more towards the educational aspect of what it is you're doing here rather than the financial part of it. Certainly, the financial part is important, but for me, it would not be the lead in a story that I was writing. My story would lead with the educational benefit of doing this. How you do it moving forward is certainly going to be the hard part. I would also argue, and I've had actually many arguments with people, because I'm around town a lot, I've had many, many arguments with people about what, what you said, Dan, about no means no. There is no data, and there is no way to tease out the data on the votes that were taken, voting down the warrant article that did not allow us to have full day kindergarten nor build brook, sorry, brick and mortar. Right? There is no way for us to know which of the voters voted no for brick and mortar or which voted no for full day kindergarten. What we know is those two things were combined, and you didn't get 61%. I will tell you, I had dozens of people tell me, I voted no because I didn't want to do the brick and mortar, because I thought it was too expensive. Dozens of people told me that. You will have people come to these meetings and say, the people voted no. Yep, they did. But what did they vote no on? There is no way to tease that out. It's impossible. So I wish you the best of luck moving forward. You all know what you need to do. The staff clearly worked tremendously hard on this, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Oh, come on up.
John Wilson, Tranquil Drive. This is a lot to swallow at 8:30 at night for the first time. I'm curious as to how many, have we drawn a circle, looked at like a radius around Lunedary, 100 miles or so, towns that kind of are close to Lunedary. How many of those have moved to this model of integrating the kindergarten into the local neighborhood grammar schools? Do we know that?
A K-5 building? I mean, like having a kindergarten to fifth grade building? Having a, having a kindergarten to fifth grade building?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, adding, instead of having the traditional, I guess I would say, model of having a separate and distinct kindergarten system, integrating kindergarten into basically just a minus one grade, grade system.
I, I think there's a handful of towns that had a separate kindergarten building. I think Gofftown has one, which is why they're kind of stuck with us too. I think Amherst has one. And I think you, you will see some K-3s, some K-5s, some K-4s, you know, it tends to be more typical. But having separate kindergarten probably is not as typical as maybe once was. But we have to, we haven't studied it intensely.
I mentioned that is, my first thought about, first of all, I can see some advantages to this. My first thought about this after seeing it, and the reason I ask about others, is this screams out for unintended consequences analysis of where this may, you know, 10 years from now, do we regret this? Because once you go down this road, I would suspect it would be very hard to go back. So I think, you know, obviously, we have to get this right. But, but, you know, basic, basically the thoughts I have now, now, you've, you've put a lot in an hour presentation. But I always, if, I don't like usually to be an early adopter, which is what we're doing here. And man, that usually, well, in the business world at least, that usually causes just as many regrets as it does, you know, glad we did this, so.
I mean, I think in, in terms of kindergarten and full day kindergarten, we're, we're like last in the game. Because, you know, once, once Governor Sununu kind of incentivized full day kindergarten, all the school districts that had the space moved to it in, in different ways, you know, kind of depending on the space they had. depending on the space they had. We just didn't have the space at the time.
The other thought that I have, as you went through, is I was thinking, if we already had kindergarten, we had, we've been there, done that, we've solved our problem, it seems like when I was, kinda surprised about some of the class sizes, it seems to me that where we would be now, knowing is cutting down those class sizes since you had the physical capacity to do it. And it seems to me that this is, in fact, kind of a trade-off of doing that, because you can't, you won't be able to tackle the classroom sizes going forward for quite a while, because, you know, because of the obvious, you picked. You picked between, you know, the classroom sizes. To me, although, my years of having kids in schools is long gone, but I remember, and it may, truism, but I suspect it's not true anymore because of a lot of the technology things we're seeing, is, once you hit a classroom size of sixteen or below, magic between starts happening in the classroom, and we are quite a ways away from that. Now, is that still old, true, that concept?
No, and I'll preface, no one likes when I talk about class size, because, you know, when I was a fifth-grade teacher nearly twenty-five years ago, I had thirty-two kids in a classroom. I know probably when Nate was the superintendent in Arizona, they're in the thirties, right? Yeah. You know, what the research has shown, time and time again, there was one study, the STAR study from Tennessee, you know, nearly forty years ago now, that tried to land in a number, what's the right number for class size? And it made a conclusion like in eighty-four, eighty-five, or eighty-six, and then the couple decades after that, what all the, you know, people who studied it came out of was, what really matters is whether you're an effective teacher or not. If you're an effective teacher with eighteen kids or thirty-two kids, you're gonna make a difference in those kids' lives. If you're an ineffective teacher with eighteen or thirty-two, you're gonna be ineffective. So, there wasn't, there's never been a really strong, you know, sense for class size. There are some caveats to that. If you live in really high poverty areas, especially for boys, some lower numbers can be more beneficial, but on the broad scope of things, lower class size doesn't lead to higher achievement. And no one likes it when I say that, especially staff.
Has the technology that you have now weakened that argument with the smaller class size? Or taken away from?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know if anyone's looked at that specifically, but, you know, it's a good question.
Okay, that's my two cents. Thank you. Anyone else?
Megan Corcoran, Farm Meadows Lane. I actually don't have a question, just to comment. I just wanna put out there, I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. As somebody who has spent a lot of years in elementary education, pre-K through fifth grade, in many different districts, I have seen lots of pre-K through fifth-grade successful schools. I know we're only talking K through five schools, but I just wanted it on record, I think this is a great plan. I, again, as an educator, but I have two young children who are about to enter the Lundy School System. I'm excited for this plan. I know there are a lot of logistical details that still need to be ironed out through the budget process. I think we're gonna need more people on board, come deliberative and things like that, and really helping the public understand, but I think it's a great plan, and I just wanted to put that on record for you.
Thank you. Anyone?
Kaylee Digman, sixteen King Charles Drive. I know that there's a lot of building going on, a lot of apartments, and I was just curious if there was any information about how that might affect enrollment.
Yeah, so I just reached out to the assistant town manager to kinda see if they have any updated enrollment coming our way, but I think what I've seen from working with them the last couple of years is, the number of kids that show up in each development keeps getting smaller and smaller and smaller, based on the assumptions we had even five, ten years ago. I think for all the factors we got brought up, it's just, it's really hard to move in here with a young family, but that's something to keep an eye on, for sure.
I just wanted to make a comment, too, because I think we've heard from you guys, and I agree, this was a great presentation and a great proposal, and we've heard a lot from teachers and past teachers, but, and people with kids with special needs, but I'm a parent of a kid who's gone through Moose Hill, and I have a daughter who is gonna be entering the 2026 school year, and I just wanna say, as a parent, half-day kindergarten, sorry, is very hard. It's hard to deal with, most parents, I mean, most households are two working parents now, and it's not even about the money, it's about the schedule. It's about trying to figure out how my child is gonna be okay restarting their day every single day with new people, new schedules, new environments. So, I just wanna put out there that, as a parent, it's really hard to deal with, and I really thought moving in here, 2013, that it would've been figured out by now, so I just wanna say thank you, too, because, as I think I've heard from a lot of parents, this was something that they also thought was gonna be part of what, you know, five years down the line, that they would have, and it just is good to see that there's some momentum going now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, going once, twice?
There'll be many more, as Jason said earlier tonight. We're just receiving this information tonight as a board, so we're gonna compile our questions and that, and work through some things, but we hope to have another go-round or a workshop, per se, in September with parents and that, with our additional questions as we work through all this with the superintendent and staff. So, there'll be many more opportunities for other questions, and as always, you can reach out to the staff with any questions meanwhile, until we have another get-together on the kindergarten process. But thank you for all coming out tonight, and we'll see you in the near future. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Dan. All right, moving on, regular agenda. I will open it up for public comment if anyone's here for anything else before we continue on. Seeing none? I will close public comment, and now we will go on to seven point one, and this is to discuss the withdrawal of fund balance for architectural plans for district office at Town Hall Proposal. This will be a public hearing, so I will look for a motion to open the public hearing, please. Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Tim, and a roll call vote, please, from my left to right.
Hi, Kevin Gray.
Hi, Tim Porter.
Hi, Bob Slater.
Hi, Amanda Butcher.
Thank you. Public hearing is open, and Amity?
Yes. So, this actually answers the question that was asked earlier. This is, so it seemed overwhelmingly that the two projects, the full-day K and the district office, needed to be separated, so there are two separate plans being worked on. So, as Sean Mahon said, the town and the school district are collaborating to work together to build, a one-story builds adjacent to Town Hall to house the district office. There's gonna be more meetings that come, there's a lot of benefits to this, it would end the current lease at Kitty Hawk, it brings the district office staff back to the center of town, it's a fiscally responsible plan for the taxpayers, it's a complicated plan that we have to fund it. I think that will come out more during the budget season to see how that unfolds, but in order for us to make this possible, we need to get accurate costs and a guaranteed maximum price that we would need to make this build happen, so we need developmental design plans from an architect who will need to consult with engineers to get the correct numbers for the budget process. So, in order to do it, time is of the essence, engineers are booking out weeks to months in advance, so what we are asking for tonight is for the board to consider approving the expenditure of ninety thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to fund this work with Marignes Architecture, who's worked on several different district projects, very familiar with our buildings, familiar with the town. They already had some basic drawings completed for us that we had okayed the expense for earlier in the spring. This work to get more details would depend on the collaboration between the architect and engineers, and we would need the plans completed in time for November in order to have the correct budget season calculation, so time is definitely of the essence. Right now, we have about 1.4 million in our unassigned fund balance, after we had had money taken out to approve the district-wide VoIP phone project that is nearly complete. We are anticipating a significant surplus from the fiscal year 25 that just closed, we'll discuss this in more depth on the September second board meeting, so tonight, we're really just looking for the approval to expand the unassigned fund balance to get these developmental design plans so we can move forward for the build on Town Hall plans. Any questions or anything for you guys?
Just to hit on what Amity said, we had a conversation with Paul, right? Paul Marignes? And he was able to reduce the number down approximately thirty thousand from his original quote, was in the 120 area, to get us to a point where we could get deliverable drawings to qualified contractors, to be able to come back with an accurate number for budget season and that, so he's aware of, you know, what we have for funds. As Sean hinted a little bit, we're working on the task force, which has another meeting this week to set it up and formally kick it off on Thursday, and so Paul is well aware of where we are and where we're to be, so once these plans are developed to a twenty percent margin, then we will probably have a estimator look at it like we did with the last project and see where we're heading budget-wise, so then we can take a look at it before we finish the drawings and say it's X amount of dollars heading over what we've got for a budget, or available funds with the town funds and our funds. We can look to make some changes if need be, whether it's size, whether it's, you know, applications or construction models. So, it's a process that's gonna take several months, that's why it needs to start now to get us into November, December timeframe, and we're fortunate enough to have the town really partnering with us to push this forward, and that could be significant savings to our taxpayers on interest money and that moving forward, too, so just a little more history to the conversation we had with Paul. So, I think everybody's on the same page, and, you know, we wanna try to make this as viable as possible so we don't have to get into a negotiation of extending the lease up where we are, which is only two years away after this year, so just a little more.
Any further questions? I will look for a motion to approve withdrawing ninety thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to cover the cost of developmental design plans, please. Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five-zero. Thank you, Amity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, I will look for a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I wanna just jump back, guys, I apologize to my colleagues, that, do you have any questions for Dan regarding the presentation? We listened to all the folks, but I kinda glazed over that, so. All right, I just, I felt bad when I was going through this and that, there was a lot of information there, and I know I have to digest, I've got a bunch of questions, but I gotta work through them.
Yeah, no, I thought it was a great presentation, but I definitely wanna digest.
So, we'll have it on the agenda for September second.
But, you know, in between, if you wanna talk to Abby, or Paul, or Sandra, or Deb, or me or Jay, you know.
Yeah, one thing I would like to see you do is where you've gotta figure it out if we could get a layout of each building and where the classrooms are gonna go, so if school board members want to go and visit with them and walk through where the service is and all that will be as soon, that's gonna be part of it, too, so.
Yep, some are fancier than others right now.
And the one other thing is playgrounds, equipment for each school, kindergarten playgrounds.
Wasn't in last year's project, but.
It was talked about last year in the budget, so I'd like to make sure we have an area for the kindergarten kids like they have now. Looks like we've got some savings, so we might be able to do something on that, 'cause I know that was a concern. All right, we're good. All right, let's jump into deliberations, nine point one, Feed It Forward. Hi, Crystal.
Hi, guys, how are you today?
Welcome.
I thought I was gonna be too close, now I'm too far. It's a pleasure to see everybody, it's a little weird to see you so early in the year, I'm not gonna lie. So, what I'm gonna talk to you guys today about is Feed It Forward. Next slide, please. So, last year, we had made strides as far as negative meal debt, but as of yesterday, eight-four-twenty-five, we're still looking at a negative fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and eighty-two cents. So, we are actively still working to collect the debt, we send weekly balance notices that are emailed every Tuesday and Friday, letters are sent home through the United States Postal Service, as well as letters from the district office, we make monthly phone calls from food service, we are working out payment plans with families, and the district did actively set consequences for high negative balances in place. So, I actively reached out to our software, which is Link, and I had asked them if there was anything that we could do as far as donations. I had had a few families at the end of the year that had graduating seniors, and they had wanted to donate what was left in their student's accounts towards the negative debt, but because they are attached to students, you cannot just move those funds, so I had actually reached out to our software, and I had asked them if there was a means of being able to do that. Next slide, please. And what they came back with was Feed It Forward. So, Feed It Forward is a function that is already part of our Link software, I simply just need to turn it on. So, how does Feed It Forward help? Feed It Forward allows parents to donate to their individual schools through the Link app, should they wish to. It also allows parents and guardians of seniors to donate remaining meal funds towards negative balances, again, should they wish to. But what it also does is it allows the district to move funds from families that have left the district and did not request meal funds returned. Rather than have these funds sit, the district will be able to donate them to the negative meal debt. And just on a note, Feed It Forward functions like any other donation, so funds would be allocated fairly across the selected school, grade, and/or eligibility. Feed It Forward cannot be used to pay individual accounts. Next slide, please. So, what would Feed It Forward look like for our parents? Once enabled, parents and guardians would see a new area under the meal account section of the Link Connect payment system. It would allow them to utilize the Feed It Forward function. This function is 100% up to the parents, it will not generate any donations in that field. If the parents never wish to use it, they don't ever have to. Next slide. And then what does Feed It Forward look like in the back of the house? So, what you can see there is actually a screenshot of my back-of-house system, that is every single school, and all the way at the end where it has that current balance, you'll see that all of them are zero. That's because Feed It Forward is currently not active. So, essentially, once I enable the system, it becomes active on my dashboard. From this dashboard, I can move funds once approved, and all movement is documented and printed through the software for record-keeping. My overall goal is to move any funds from Feed It Forward at the end of the year, and this would align with the timeframe that the district utilizes to pay off any negative senior balances. Next slide. Any questions?
Just a quick one, how do, if a student graduates and they have a positive balance, how do they get that money back, currently?
Oh, they request it from me.
They request it from you?
Yep, if it's over a certain amount, families physically come in to me, and I will hand them cash, it's anything under the twenty-dollar mark, and then anything over that, it actually goes through the district office and they get a check.
What if they don't currently request it from you?
Unfortunately, at this time, it just sits on their accounts.
For how long?
Indefinitely.
Really? Do they get notification that it's there?
Yep, I reach out to families towards the end of the year, letting them know that your seniors have however much money on their accounts, and then we also send a letter as well.
So, currently, there's a balance that's sitting there that might have been building up for years?
Yes.
You don't have authorization to just push that?
I do not know, that would go through you guys at the board and the district office.
Raw numbers.
Oh.
Right now.
Right off the top of my head, you at least have a couple hundred dollars that I know of, right off the top of my head, and those are families that have been gone for...
But in total, it's just a couple hundred bucks, it's just sitting there.
Jeanette and I would physically have to pull those numbers for you, I only have current... I only have current enrollment.
I'm just wondering if it's like thousands of dollars that's sitting there.
It's not a substantial number. It's not like, I wouldn't find, you know, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars there. Um, but it does actively just sit there because the district can't do anything with it, and there's currently no place to put it.
Crystal, if you don't have this, that's okay, but do you remember the last time that you gave us an update what the number was? Was that in the spring?
Uh, it was in the spring. Um, we definitely got a decent amount of money back from graduating seniors, so I appreciate all the help that came from the district office for that. Um, but we were still within that fifty-five, sixty-thousand-dollar range.
I think it was almost sixty, so I think between the senior activities, we got that back. We are anticipating we'll probably get a couple of thousand back with parking passes. Um, so it's things like that where we, we tend to see it come. But then it's like, you get it back, and then you're underway, and people put it. So we hang right around the same.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for looking into this.
No worries.
Uh, yeah, just logistically, I mean, I like, I like the idea of this. And is there, how would this work from a budgetary process, right? Because that, that negative balance goes against the budget, is that correct?
Well, yes, so we pick up any debt that's, that's bad debt on the general fund. We budget for that, I think we budget ten thousand a year for potential, um, with that, with the, the senior class. So this would help offset, it's not necessarily the senior class, it would depend where the, where the money came from.
Yes.
So, um, it would just help, it would lessen the amount of debt that you see. And then on the backend, we would determine where that's being taken from, kind of like what we did with the donation from the Sugar House.
Okay, there's no specific, I guess I was thinking, like, is there any process that we have to go through? Like any specific process over and above what we're already dealing, just that we need to keep in mind?
No, 'cause we talked, so the first person after Crystal was, uh, Jeanette Evans, who oversees all of that, 'cause we don't like to make her job any harder to do that. Um, and she, the way that the system is pretty seamless, and she already works with Link to see what the negative balances are and that sort of thing. So it would just be an added step. And I think it was a relief to Crystal because that, you know, you never want to be accused of playing favorites of where you put the money. This feature protects that and, and keeps it. And it allows parents that, you know, they may get their check or come in for five dollars, and they might have, having this option, they might say, just feed it forward. Yeah, so you might get more money.
Yeah.
Cool, that's awesome, thank you, Dan.
That's good. Crystal, thank you so much.
Anytime, if you have any other.
That'd be a nice feature to have, so.
That is the hope.
Yep, it is. Thank you so much.
All right. Moving on, we've got several third readings. Any changes on district side?
No changes.
Any question from the board on these for the final reading to adopt?
No.
All right, I'll go through and, uh, and that, so I'll, we'll move through it like we typically do. Uh, nine point two, look for a motion to approve the third reading to adopt policy JCA, change of class of school or assignment best interest and manifest hardship, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Nine point three, look for a motion to approve the third reading to rescind policy EC, school property, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Thank you. Nine point four, look for a motion to approve the third reading to rescind policy ECR, building modifications, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Nine point five, look for a motion to approve the third reading to rescind policy ECA B, vandalism, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Nine point six, look for a motion to approve the third reading to rescind policy EDC, authorized use of school-owned materials, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Nine point seven, look for a motion to approve the third reading to rescind policy EE AB, school bus routes, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Nine point eight, look for a motion to approve the third reading to rescind policy EE AG, student transportation records and reports, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Tim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Nine point nine, look for a motion to approve the third reading to amend policy EA, support services goals, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. And nine point one zero, um, look for a motion to approve the third reading to amend policy EBCD, emergency closings, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Thank you, everyone. And nine point eleven, discussion of working group on district office proposal at town hall.
Just, uh, yeah, I mean, very, very simply, uh, we have our first, uh, our, our first real meeting on Thursday morning. Jason, Amity, myself, and Joe Parsnick will be part of the working group. Seems like Bob and Tim will be there as well. Um, I think we're picking our chair that meeting, and then kind of mapping out the scope of the work. Mr. Mahalan has already done a lot of that in terms of like timeline and tasks for us to create. So, um, I think tonight is just to try and get if there's any specific input or, or, or things the school board's looking for within this process. That'll kind of run parallel with budget process and everything else we do.
Any questions? No, we had, um, reached out, um, to see who could go the last time Tim was available, 'cause most of these mornings are gonna be in the mornings, uh, meetings will be in the mornings 'cause of town staff and school staff. Um, and he was flexible to do that. Is everybody okay with Tim still staying on there? I'd like to have two of us, the town has one, um, counselor, I believe, but I'd like, I always like to have two of us involved in these meetings. Is everybody okay with that?
Absolutely.
That's good.
Um, and we'll keep you as updated as this go, like we said, the official meeting, uh, as Dan just said, is, uh, Thursday. And that, as you can see in the packet, the, uh, the town manager put this together, and he's got, you know, all the outlines of the town and the school working together. And, uh, hopefully, we can make this work, uh, economically for, for our taxpayers and, uh, get us back in the center of town, so stay tuned. So, seeing none, I think we're all set with that. And anything else?
Say hello to our new human resources director, Lisa Dreback.
Yes. Lisa, welcome. Anything else?
I'm good.
Anything else, Lisa? Anything? Good. All right. With that, I will look for a motion to go into non-public session requested under RSA ninety-one, A, colon, three, section two, B, and C, please.
So moved.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Tim. Uh, roll call vote from my left to right, please.
Hi, Kevin Gray.
Hi, Tim Porter.
Hi, Bob Slater.
Hi, Sarah Loflin.
Hi, Amanda Butcher.
Good night, Londonery.